Good morning. I'd like to call the Lane County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order for Tuesday, April 21st. And the first item is adjustments to the agenda. Any adjustments to the agenda? I will note that we have a time certain at 10:00 a.m. this morning, so if we need to, we might have to juggle some items around that time. Moving on to item two, public comment. We have so far five people signed up for public comment. And you'll have three minutes to address the board this morning. And if you'll just state your name and the city you're from for the record. And as soon as I can try and get my timer set up. There we go. The first person is Webb Sussman.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Webb Sussman. I live in the city of Eugene. And I wanted to get two things accomplished this morning. First, I wanted to thank you all very much. Several of you were kind enough to respond to my comments last week about the county's website, provided a lot of additional detail and some additional contacts. That was very, very useful and appreciated. And I'm looking forward to seeing the results. I'm hoping you guys can execute that contract shortly and get the improvement projects underway. And I wanted to say thank you. The second thing that I wanted to ask you about this morning involved illumination of road hazards. I've been doing a fair bit of driving around some of the remoter areas of the county lately, and some of that is on county roads. And have discovered that there are places that are not particularly well illuminated at night that could use some street lighting. And I had several thoughts around that, one of which involved the use of LED streetlights, perhaps combined with solar panels and batteries. I understand it's very, very expensive to run utilities out to a remote location simply to provide lighting for the roadway. And I'm aware that there have been great strides made in sort of point lighting using LED streetlights. The other thing that brought that to mind was the fact that by converting to LED streetlights generally throughout the county, even in areas where the utilities are able to provide power, the energy costs go way down, the reliability goes way up, and the cost to the county is greatly reduced. And since that goes straight to the county's bottom line, obviously, any cost reduction would be a benefit to the county and to the taxpayers. I recognize that you guys are not the appropriate body to bring this to. I recognize that I need to bring this to the attention of the Roads Advisory Committee and intend to do so this Thursday at their regular meeting. But wanted to make you aware of my interest and was hoping that you guys would weigh in if you felt necessary. That's all I have this morning, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Sterling Rand.
My name is Sterling Rand. I live in Junction City. My subject is Uber. I live on Social Security, and the little money I got from Uber allowed me to live a little better. I find Uber was really a valuable resource for a couple reasons. One, we would pick up people at bars at midnight who were under the influence but did not want to drive home. If they called for a taxicab, that might take an hour. They weren't about to wait an hour, but they would wait three minutes or two minutes for an Uber ride, which meant that person is not driving under the influence in the city. And on more than one occasion, I would pick people up in the morning and take them back to their car so they didn't drive while under the influence. I think that's a real safety factor. Also, I think that the city council's arguments against Uber were really rather specious in that they wanted the city to do a safety inspector, which is just some person. They said it would take five minutes. My vehicle was inspected by a professional mechanic, and it took 30 minutes. They even pulled the wheels off to check the brake pads. The city was not about to do that. Background checks. Uber would go back three years, which is, I understand, the legal limit to go back and check. Uber agreed to ensure me from the time I accepted the ride, no rider, accepted the ride until the ride was done. That means we had data when somebody got in the cab, who got in the cab, who the driver was, and where they got out. So there was a safety factor there. So I'm in favor of Uber, obviously, and I hope the city council will change their mind, and maybe a little help from you would help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kara Smith.
Good morning, Chair and Board. I am Kara Smith. I'm from Lane County, and I have two friends here.
I'm Cheryl Fetter from Eugene.
Liz Doughty from Springfield.
And we three are here to thank you for your support for the Health and Human Services funding. It's critical to all the nonprofits in our area, and it really goes to some good services, and essential and critical services that help all of our neighbors. And they're going to tell you about how they impact them and their neighbors as well.
I live in a senior mobile home park in Springfield, the one over close to the radio tower. And we recently have been serving a family. Started out, woman was living alone. She's a grandmother. Her grandson committed suicide. All of a sudden, her daughter, granddaughter, and the grandson's girlfriend and the great-grandson, who was a toddler, were living with her. And eventually, the grandfather moved back in also. And she was already, on her own, qualified for a variety of food support. And then, all of a sudden, on a $1,200 income and a little bit of food support, she was trying to feed six people who were living in one of those tiny little four-room houses that they built right after World War II. I'm old enough to sort of remember those, even if you aren't. And she's now moved to another community within Lane County where the real estate costs are a little cheaper. So they're doing a little bit better, and they do have room now. They don't have anybody sleeping on the floor. But this was a situation where your help with the costs from Food for Lane County were a big help. And I have some messages, thank yous, and comments from some people.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I live at Park Two Terrace, where we do a program called Extra Helpings, where we get produce and fruit and pastries that we give out on Thursdays. And most people, when they look at other people, especially disabled people, they think, oh, they get food stamps. Well, that's true, but they get very little food stamps. And so these programs that we have in Eugene and the other cities are vital to people because your neighbor could maybe need a food box. You don't know what's going on in other houses, and people need this. And there's a horrible stigma. The minute you say "food box," people say "homeless." That stigma needs to go away, and people need to be fed. And I went up to the Capitol, and my whole life was changed. All of a sudden, I'm interested in politics, and I want to do everything I can do for my community so no one goes hungry ever. No one should ever go hungry. And we appreciate all the support that you give us and the things that you do for our cities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So that was everyone I had signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board this morning? Seeing that none out there, we'll move on to Commissioners' response to public comments and/or other remonstrance. Commissioner Sorenson.
Thank you very much. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I just wanted to make note of that and recognize this. We know that much of the horrible abuse that children suffer can be prevented, and so the topic isn't, there's nothing you can do about child abuse. It's, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I just want to thank organizations in the community that are working on child abuse prevention, including Eugene Relief Nursery, Pleasant Hill Family Resource Center, Springfield Public Library, Springfield Relief Nursery, Oregon Social Learning Center, the 90 by 30 Conference, which is April 25, and the Eugene Public Library are among those that are involved with Child Abuse Prevention Month. Thanks.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple things. So Webb, the Iraq meeting is tomorrow night, not Thursday night. So 5:15, 5:30. That's correct. Yep, very good. So I know they just left, but I really appreciate the testimony provided by public comment this morning and glad to hear, you know, we don't always get to hear people who are saying thank you to us, so it's always nice to hear folks come up before us and thanking our participation and our collaboration with regarding, stuff's going around again. And with, especially regarding, I think, the health and welfare of our community, so it's very nice to hear. And then finally, I think this was announced actually before or after our last board meeting, but boy, what history is to be made yet again. The World Games are coming here to 2021, so I know the bidding process during the 2019 was so close. You know, they had to go on an extra before we just barely lost out for the 2019. So I found it interesting that they just rewarded Eugene for the 2021 World Truck and Field Games. So first time the events ever come in the United States, and it'll be coming right here to historic Hayward Field. So we got a lot of time to work on that and get prepared, but I think it's going to be exciting, not only for Eugene and Lane County, but the state of Oregon, the United States as a whole. So really looking forward to that. Very exciting.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Mr. Sussman, thanks for pointing out the LED lighting. If you go out of the West Eugene Wetlands, the Fern Ridge Bike Path ends at Green Hill and Royal Avenue right now. There's a spur that goes from that point to the Les Lyle Viewpoint, just across from Green Hill Humane Society. And if you notice there, the spur has the new technology spotlighting with solar panels. And you can compare that directly with the older technology, which leads up to the spur. And you can see the very, very amazing advances that have come with LED lighting and how directional the lighting is and how it really doesn't spill over into adjacent, you know, maybe more light-sensitive areas or neighborhoods. So the spotlighting is really visible out there. If you get a chance at night, just drive on by there and you'll see the difference. It really is stunning. I'd like to thank Kara Smith also. Kara was here, she's the advocacy director. She didn't mention it, for Food for Lane County. She works at Food for Lane County. And Jay and I spent some time out there yesterday, and really, she has helped Food for Lane County really propel itself into a new region, really, of providing food. They're topping eight million pounds distributed this year, eight million pounds of food, which is remarkable when you think about that. And a lot of that is because of ladies like Shar, who just said that she's getting involved. Well, they're getting involved in the kind of way that you experienced today. They're thanking and giving positive reinforcement to the folks who are helping Food for Lane County and the many, many ways that they help people in our community. So I would have wished that they'd stayed here, us thanking them right back, but they really do a great deal for the community. Everybody knows that. Food for Lane County is not a new kid on the block by any means, that they are really moving to a new level of being able to distribute food. And just briefly to touch on what Commissioner Lichen has already very eloquently and adequately stated, we all received a message from Vin Lanana the day before it was announced publicly. I think it was probably announced that very day publicly, but it came out in the news media regarding the 2021 games. And I didn't know what I was reading because it had been such a competitive process for the previous World Games that, and I hadn't even heard that the discussion was taking place. So it was really, really quite a pleasant surprise to see that Sebastian Coe, who I went to the same high school as in England, by the way, he was much younger than me, well, not much younger, but just handed the baton, so to speak, to Vin Lanana, and we're getting a huge, huge event in 2021. It's beyond the scope of, I mean, I can't even really picture it. It's remarkable what's going to happen with that. We need to build new hotels, I think. Maybe one of the fairgrounds. Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And first of all, I'd like to thank Webb. My comments on the LED lighting is that if at any time we have the opportunity to put those in, we need to. My experience is that in a park that I'm working on in Cottage Grove, we put in 28 LED lights. They were a little bit more expensive, but the energy draw was, I was told by the electrician, probably a fifth of what normal standard lighting would have taken. And their lifespan is almost double of that of a standard bulb. So if I'm not really familiar, it'd be interesting to have you give that presentation to the Roads Committee and hear the response from staff, because I'm not sure how many streetlights we actually do put out. And I do know that some of these intersections where power is non-existent, if we, if technology can provide us new ways to illuminate intersections, it would give us, I think, other options for dealing with situations like Broad River Trail Crossing or places where lighting isn't good or visibility. So I appreciate you bringing that up, and I know the benefits are there if we can afford to do it. The second is, I want to say thank you too to the folks that came and spoke to the Human Services Budget and to the funds that we give out. You know, I know that it was said that, you know, people that receive food boxes sometimes are looked down upon, but, you know, those are lifelines for people. In fact, my aunt, she was living on about $650 worth of disabled Social Security, receiving assistance from HACSA. And by the time she got all done, she qualified for $25, I think, in food stamps or food assistance. And so those boxes that she was able to get from community sharing really helped her make it month to month. And so I know they're lifelines, and it's a critical, important service. And I just really appreciate, we've had several different providers that receive funding from our human services, and I appreciate them coming and highlighting those because we don't get much of an opportunity to showcase those out to the citizens that are watching, and it's a good opportunity to talk about those critical services. So thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, I'd like to thank the folks that came to speak about Food for Lane County. And what I learned yesterday, I took a tour of the facility after the Human Services Commission meeting yesterday, and I learned that the support they get from the Human Services Commission, which is funded from Lane County, City of Eugene, and City of Springfield, allows them not to charge food banks for the transfer of food. And the food, I mean, food pantries that pick up the churches, the Community Share, Junction City, you know, all the various places, you know, the Mapleton Food Bank, they don't get charged because they figured out that if they did charge, you know, a transfer fee for that food, that they would just buy less food. They would get less food every month. And this allows those food pantries actually to get more food, and it's the community support and funding that allows them not to charge those distribution points that service fee, basically, for handling the food from the donors to get them actually out onto the shelves. I also learned that they have about 75,000 unique people that draw their services every year, and that those people average about five times a year that they might need help. So it's not like people come every month and they always, it's just, there gets to be a time where sometimes between the 15th and the 30th, they run short and need that assistance, a little bit of extra help. So it's an important service, and it's nice to be able to keep people from being hungry in our community. I'd also just like to thank Mr. Rand for coming in to talk about Uber, a very interesting subject. And it's kind of interesting because it's not just Uber that's kind of challenging governments with technology and moving faster than our ability to understand and how to regulate and keep people safe. It's things like Airbnb, you know, where we have people renting rooms in private homes and, you know, do they have proper insurance, you know, is the room safe, you know, all those, all those things you kind of wonder about. So technology's moved faster than some of us local government's ability to adjust to it, so it's an interesting conversation, one I think this board needs to continue to have in the future and maybe even with the city, is about how do we deal with some of these online mobile services, where everybody's acting as independent contractors, and the mobile service is just a way of connecting a customer with that independent contractor. You know, that's basically the Airbnb mode, that's Uber's mode. There'll be probably more coming out in the future. And how do we deal with that as a governmental entity, and how do we, you know, assure the public safety, you know? We do restaurant inspections to make sure people are getting healthy food. How do we deal with, you know, the Ubers and the Airbnbs, you know, what's next? You know, you're going to have an app where you can come and have dinner with the family, you know, in a non-commercial kitchen, you know? So I don't know what will be next. We have to think about that a little bit. And I want to thank Webb for coming in again. I will note that we have replaced most of our stoplights with LED, you know, around the county. It's been a consistent program that Public Works has been undertaking, and it started quite a few years back just for that whole reason, that they don't have to be replaced as often, and they take a lot less power. And I'll take a moment to say, I agree that we have places out in the county that could use safety lighting, and there's many places we could even use improvements to some of our roads to keep them safe. But it's critical we have the funding to do that. And I'll just, you know, put a plug in here for the vehicle registration fee because that's what's going to allow our Public Works Department to keep our roads maintained and safe condition. And, you know, LED lighting and solar panels and all that stuff is going to take money to purchase in the first place, and it's going to take money to keep them maintained, especially when they're out in remote areas, to make sure they're working. So please support the vehicle registration fee so we can keep our roads safe. Any other comments from the board?
Commissioner Lichen.
Real quickly, Mr. Chair, you had mentioned about technology. By the way, I don't know if folks are aware of this, but South Eugene High School, their, what they call their robotics team, is actually heading to St. Louis for a national competition. And so they're very much on the map. And so I think it's very exciting to see the, what, you know, that's happening in the high schools here locally, that, because this is the wave of the future. I mean, this is where I think so much technology's going to be happening, you know, as we move forward. So I'm very, very excited, you know, as a graduate of South Eugene High School, but not just that. I'm really excited for the students to really enjoy this competition, so I wish them the best.
So how do Springfield Millers like the fact that you're a graduate of South Eugene High School?
Usually, when I told folks, I said, I graduated from South Eugene. I'm wearing your jeans right now, so I'm good.
All right. Well, thank you, and moving on, we have emergency businesses. There are emergency businesses this morning.
No, there is none.
Thank you. And then we go to the consent calendar, and these are routine items that'll be considered by the board under one motion. And if folks out there want to see the individual items we'll be voting on, they're on our website along with links to the background information on each item. And is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved unanimously. So we're a little early for our time certain, so I'm going to skip over that and move on to Human Resources. I see Ms. Edboards out in the audience there, and we'll have a report and direction about the candidates for Lane County Sheriff. And Marcia Edwards, our Human Resources Director, will be presenting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just wanted to give you an update on the recent recruitment for sheriff. We received eight applications, two of which passed the minimum qualifications. So tomorrow, I believe you have a work session scheduled. During that time, we'll have, each of the candidates will come in, present for five minutes to you, and then you'll have an opportunity to meet individually with them and ask them some questions.
Any questions about the process from the Commissioners? So, and I understand that we are going to have a presentation from each one, approximately five minutes, and then the board will have about 25 minutes to ask questions.
Twenty-five minutes, yes.
And we'll be asking the same questions of both candidates, and the candidates during that period of the process will be kept in isolation so they won't get to hear each other's answers. And that will be, that portion of the meeting will be part of our publicly televised meeting. It'll be in public, so folks can watch that. And there will be public comment also prior to the board starting that process. So if people want to come and give input, that's an opportunity for them, as well as they can email the board at any time with their input about the two candidates that are available to the board. And then we have an exec session scheduled after that public portion of the process to deliberate, and then we'll probably come out and either make a decision at that time or choose to additional process. Commissioner Farr.
If I may, just to make sure that I'm clear on the process, we're going to be making a selection or a recommendation, or we actually make the selection, the board makes a selection. And the successful candidate will serve until when?
They will serve until the next election, I believe, May 2016.
So approximately one year from now, there'll be an election. And that will be an election to complete the four-year term, or that will be for a new four-year term?
Commissioner Bozovich, or Chair Bozovich, Commissioner Farr, I believe they actually begin their four-year, their own four-year.
That would be an actual four-year start from the beginning term.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure that I understood that and that everybody could hear it said. Very good. Excellent. Well, thank you for your work on this and have the package in front of us. And we had a lot of candidates who applied. It was pleasing to see so many people interested in what is a really pivotal time in our Sheriff's Department. Thank you very much.
Maybe I can clarify on that question. May 2016, if there's multiple candidates and no one gets less than, more than 50% of the vote, then it will move to a two-candidate election, the top two in the November general election, and the actual term starts January of 2017?
Yeah, that's what I, and Mr. Mokraheisky was, wanted me to clarify that. Yes, they begin their own individual four-year term January of 17.
Correct. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was understood, that, you know, they stand for election in May of 2016, the actual term, the new term, whoever's the interim will serve through the end of December of 2016.
So if I may, I have to make sure the clarification on that. Whatever happens May 16 or November 12, whatever the date in November, this, the person we appoint will serve through December of 2016.
That's correct. In theory, Commissioner Farr, then someone else could file and
In theory, Commissioner Farr, then someone else could file, and if they were successful in the election, they would be in their term in January of 17. If it was someone different than who you appointed.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorensen.
And if no candidate filed in May or March of 2016, then the person that we appoint as sheriff would continue in office until such time as we appointed another sheriff to serve after that sheriff ends their term of office.
Unless nobody wanted to.
I hadn't thought about that.
Okay. Well, we won't have to wait long because the filing deadline is in March of 2016. And if we learn at that time, if there's more, one or more candidates, that question will never have to be researched.
I'm hopeful that's the situation.
Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Sorensen. Commissioner Stewart.
I'll see if I can change this just a little bit and get away from this confusing conversation. Marcia, I wanted to ask, I noticed that you sent us some questions.
Yes.
For tomorrow. Are those going to be available to the two candidates ahead of the interview? Or are we going to be asking them cold at the time?
Actually, I had assumed that you would ask them cold. We could certainly provide them to the candidates when they come in. But I had assumed that they would be going cold.
All right. Well, I, you know, personally, I don't know what the rest of the board feels. Sometimes I feel it's a good opportunity to allow folks to look at the questions and gather some thoughts ahead of time. When they're not going to be able to hear each other's response, when they're not going to be able to tailor them, but at least they'll be thinking about them. So I wouldn't be opposed to them receiving them slightly ahead of interviews if others agree.
Any concern with doing that tomorrow morning, handing in the questions to both candidates in advance? And does that give the person that goes first an, you know, or second an unfair advantage of having more time of having the questions in front of them? Or?
If I may ask a question on that.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Well, one way to minimize that is to provide the questions today so that they have more time. So the difference between 21 hours and 21 hours and 30 minutes is minimized as opposed to zero in 30 minutes.
And we could certainly email the questions to the candidates.
And if you called them to say that, that you just emailed them the questions, then they're more likely to look at their email. They might not be looking at their email today because they're preparing for tomorrow. And then the other thing that occurs to me is that the people that are applying for this, they're going to be a lot more prepared to answer those questions. So I agree with Commissioner Stewart that providing the information, the alternative, you know, viewpoint, well, they'll think on their feet. I think it really doesn't give them an opportunity, or us, an opportunity to see how they would really think the question through. And so if they get that 22 hours of lead time, they're more likely to do that. So I would be more in favor of providing it to them as soon as we can. And then deal with the question of who goes first, maybe later by having some sort of coin flip to randomize the likelihood that one person's going to get some slight advantage out of the time that they have to prepare.
Or we could certainly do it in alpha order.
Yeah. First name, last name, middle name. So you make these choices.
I'm traditional. It could be last name.
Commissioner Farr.
Just a couple, as far as providing the questions ahead of time, I'm not ill opposed to that by any means. When we, we had an auditor selection committee, would the candidates provided the questions ahead of time before being asked the questions in the audit committee?
No, they were not.
I did not think so. The, having the candidates have the questions ahead of time does give them an opportunity to formulate an answer. I'm not opposed to that. Providing that we do have the latitude as a board to ask follow-up questions, as long as the follow-up questions pertain specifically to their answers or specifically to the initial question.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Lichen.
Mr. Chair, I will be a team player. I'm actually opposed to it, but I'll be a team player on this one.
All right.
I don't recall ever, I don't recall when Steve was applying for this. I don't recall providing him the, one of my questions was, what do you plan to do in your first hundred days? Our administrator did not receive questions ahead of time either. And I, but I'll be a team player and I'll go along with it. And so if we want to give the questions ahead of time to the candidates to become our next sheriff, I'll go along with it.
And, yeah. Commissioner Stewart.
Mr. Chair, I just offered it as a suggestion, as an idea. I don't, I'm not went to it either way. I just sometimes feel like if folks have an opportunity, this is, you know, it's a big department and there's a lot going on, it's a pretty critical service that we provide. I just would like something maybe just a little bit more than just off-the-cuff responses, I guess, when I'm thinking, but I'm not opposed to it.
So I'm thinking back to the process that we appointed an appraiser, which was the last time we replaced an elected official that left in midterm. And we did not supply the questions in advance. I think one of the things about being an elected official or an elected department head is you do need to have to respond sometimes without any advance warning of what the question's going to be, whether it's a constituent that asks you the question at a public meeting, or it's the press that asks you the question, or you're sitting in front of the board and we ask you the question. So I kind of agree with Commissioner Lichen. I'm not really one to, you know, if there was a balance, you know, if we wanted to send a couple of questions in advance to folks so they could prepare, and then we had a set of questions that we were going to ask at the moment, but we're only talking about right now, half-hour interview, I'd just as soon hold the questions and ask them cold on the day of the interview. It's a telling experience, I believe, in an interview process to have people have to think on their feet. And particularly when you're talking about law enforcement, thinking on your feet is a particularly necessary skill, as witnessed by the news in the last several weeks. So I would, I would support not supplying the questions in advance.
I'll change my opinion. Actually, I'm either way on it. I think as far as consistency is concerned, since as Commissioner Bozovich points out, we did not provide the questions to the auditor last time an elected official was replaced. And we didn't provide them to the, excuse me, the appraiser, or to the auditor for that matter.
That's what I should say, sorry.
Which is an elected position, consistency, I guess, as long as we're not rubbing you the wrong way too badly, Fay, I guess I'd side with the.
I just asked the question.
Hey, I'm a team player.
Either way. Okay, I think we punched that one around enough.
So what is our decision?
It sounds like we've got support for not supplying the questions.
Done.
I was, I was hearing three right here and, and team players over here.
I heard the team player started over there.
Yeah.
Finished.
That's true. Any other questions or concerns about that process for tomorrow? Thank you, and I appreciate the help of HR in screening the minimum qualifications and doing the very, you know, sudden process without a lot of notice of getting some open and transparency to getting some extra applications. So the board does have a choice. So thank you for your time, Ms. Edwards.
Chair Bozovich and board members, I would say one last piece of the process would be that if the, if the board comes out and makes a decision tomorrow, it would be contingent upon passing a background check. Yeah.
I would assume so, yeah, that's the one.
Better to state it explicitly.
Yeah. Well, we'll make sure we state that explicitly tomorrow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we still have 20 minutes till our time certain, so we'll move on to item eight, which is assessment and taxation. I think we can get that done before 10 o'clock. It's in the matter of approving submission of the county assessment function funding assistance for CAFSA grant application to the Oregon Department of Revenue for FY 1516. And we have Mike Coles, our assessor, who got cold questions when he was appointed. Mr. Coles.
Good morning, Chair and the Commissioners. I come today presenting the 201516.
You touch your mic up a little bit. There we go.
He gets a little bit better there.
Thank you.
Good morning. I come today asking for approval of the 201516 CAFSA grant application, which typically has to be turned in by May 1st to the Oregon Department of Revenue. CAFSA, for those of you in the audience that may not know, is the county assessment function funding assistance provided for, to help county assessment functions. In the past, it's provided 25, 30% as far as assessment taxation funding. Over the years, it's declined. This past year, I believe, we received about 17%. This year, the estimation's about 15% for the function, which equates to about $1 million. So it's still fairly significant as far as funding towards our department. We've done a very good job of keeping our costs down in assessment taxation. Our budget as it stands is pretty status quo. There is, staff's working very hard and we don't really have a lot of room to move either direction. We're meeting the statutory requirements for assessment taxation. And due to the cuts we've had in prior years, we also provide public service hours. However, they are, right now, fairly well cut back.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of my favorite subjects. And especially when you look through the letter of the law, I find it interesting. So based on the original intent, the legislation that was put forth in 1989, so I'm just curious, Mike, do you feel like that you're adequately staffed as far as the assessor's office is concerned?
We are staffed enough to do the bare minimum functions. If I may.
Please do.
When I started as an appraiser in 91, we were on a cyclical cycle of reappraising properties every six years. And that was very, very important because a lot of our inventory at this point in time is over 20 years old. Appraiser has not been out on the site for over 20 years. A lot of things happen in 20 years. Remodels that are unpermitted, additions that are unpermitted, or just things that fall through the cracks occasionally. So preferably, with the proper funding, I would like to start a cyclical reappraisal cycle. However, with the staff that we have now, that is not feasible.
Well, I think it's interesting because when you go through this information here, when you see the update and, especially when you look at FY 1415, the CAFSA fund paid 17% of the statewide cost to ANT systems when the intent was to pay 30 to 40%. And you know, it's really interesting when you have conversations with the folks of the Department of Revenue, and you just look at them and say, you know what? Maybe the counties just get out of this business altogether. We'll just hand it over to you. And especially when they think about Multnomah, Washington, Plaquemus, Lane, Marion, you know, their eyes get really, really big. And they realize there's absolutely no way they could do the job. You know, of course, I'm going to, I'm going to support this because we need to. But this is just one of those issues that, you know, we, as AOC and as, and as counties did, the counties actually went out in a sense, took on, and I don't want to be negative about it, but we did kind of take on the, the way the parks' funding allocation is performed. Where with all the dollars that came in through those, those different fees, 65% used to go to the state and 35% to counties. We worked on that. And in 2016, it'll be 55% to state, 45% to counties. You know, and I think this is really important. I think that this is just, should be, I think, put forth even stronger by AOC to really talk to legislature about, wait a minute, you know what? You're not even indexed in this to inflation when it was first passed in 1999. So what is, so it's 17% now, is it going to be 13% in five years? I mean, this is the part that I think, just to me, you know, as Lane County and as so many counties in the state, we're donor counties. And this, I got to tell you, every time we talk about the CAFSA grant, it just gets my blood boiling because of the fact they have not, this law is not performed the way it was presented originally and continues to decline. And I feel like we have zero champions in Salem to work, work on this on behalf of the counties. But I, you know, I'm going to support this because we need to. And we need to keep you as funded, even if it's a bare minimum. But I think your example of the appraisal of properties is significant. And it tells me that what we have on the books is not what should be there. And especially if you've not taken, if you've not taken a look at a piece of property in 20 years, and, you know, obviously, over a 20-year period, we've probably seen an increase as far as the appreciation of property is concerned, which affects your budget and affects all of our budgets here. So I appreciate that. And you're always welcome to be as dud-honest about this as you want to be. And I, and I know you have such experience in this, and I really appreciate that. So thank you. I'm now going to climb off my soapbox.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And I'll take the opportunity to echo Commissioner Lichen's concerns about state funding. But I want to ask a quick question. Several years ago, we actually had to ask the state to give us a waiver to continue our CAFSA grant because we were technically not funding out of our local funds an adequate level of assessment taxation to actually qualify for the grant. Are we still on that waiver? And is this application contingent upon the state granting us that waiver?
We still are on a waiver. However, the last CAFSA letter we received for approval in 201415, I believe, did not make mention of that waiver. However, as my best understanding from my conversations with Oregon Department of Revenue, we are on the waiver. And if I, if I can quote some of the funding notes that they had in the waiver letter was that we are on, I don't have the exact quote, but I can paraphrase, that assessment taxation for Lane County is on watch with the Department of Revenue and that we are at the bare minimum of funding for our department. If I may follow through quickly with the donor county, Commissioner Lichen mentioned, that's a very important piece to mention, that we do, as far as our deeds and records, the fees that we collect in Lane County exceed the funds that we receive back from the CAFSA function. So in a sense, Lane County subsidizes other counties on that aspect, which is an important note to make. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, it's, you know, amazing to me that, you know, we have counties in financial distress, particularly the ONC Timber Counties. And we're having to apply for a waiver from the state because we don't have enough general fund money to split up between public safety, assessment taxation, elections, and all the other functions we're required to perform by the state. And then we have to kind of beg them to give us back an inadequate grant that doesn't meet the original intention of funding. You know, they're only meeting 15% to 17% of our funding right now, and that's at our, at a waiver level of funding. If we were actually fully funding the apartment, it'd be something like 5% to 10% of what it is. So the state has definitely not met the intention of the original program of redistributing those, those transfer taxes back to the counties and not supported it with any of their general fund monies. So it's disappointing. You know, of course, I have to approve this grant because without it, you have to make a 15% cut in services. because without it, you have to make a 15% cut in services, which are already 20 years behind in appraisals and assessments. And if there's one thing I hear about every November is, you know, how messed up my tax bill is from various residents out in my district. And, you know, part of the problem is how shorthanded you are. And, you know, that they missed something or something's changed in their property that you guys haven't picked up because you haven't been out to that property in years. And they just end up having to go through the Board of Property Tax Appeals to correct that situation, you know, which is unnecessary time on our constituents' parts to fix something that if we had adequate funding for your department, probably would never have been wrong in the first place. So I appreciate the effort you guys make with the minimal amount of funding. You do. It's amazing that, you know, Lane County is, even with the minimal amount of funding, is still a leader in using technology in assessment taxation. It's what, part of what you've had to do to be efficient to the point where other counties are using you as part of a contract service, which also helps our counties supporting. You know, we may be net donors to other counties, but other counties are coming to us for assessment taxation services because we're a leader in that. So it's amazing that you can stay a leader with the funding you have. And it's just disappointing the state hasn't held up their end of the bargain. Commissioner Farr.
Just a couple of follow-up questions, Mr. Coles. Thank you for your experience. I mean, you've been around a long time. When that came out, your interview questions, when we appointed you, the questions that you were not prepared to answer, by the way. So the money that we get from the taxes that you're talking of, that's the property taxes that we receive. And what percentage of that goes to Lane County for our general fund operation?
General fund with the local options, about 12 cents of the dollar.
That's about 12% of the revenue. But you have the requirement to gather about 12% goes to us for our general fund operation, for our operations. What does the rest go? Can you tell me?
It goes to those 83 different taxing districts, including Lane County. So that would include the school districts, the local fire districts, the library, bonds to support capital improvements, and numerous other items, depending on the taxing districts.
So the dereliction that we're sort of hinting at by the state of their duty to help us collect the taxes, isn't it just the money that we receive? It's the money that we receive and then distribute to a broad number of other agencies who rely on that money, the accurate collection of that money to perform their daily business?
Correct. The schools probably hurt the most because they're one of the larger areas where the funding goes to. And an investment in assessment taxation is usually perpetual as far as the income flow that's received from that. So if a property is appraised or a building is not missed, that is lost revenue. Or if it's appraised, that's revenue that's going to continue on through the future.
And so if I live in the county or any place of that matter, and I put a 600-square-foot addition on my house and I don't permit it, my house value does go up, but the tax value doesn't go up since we're not periodically reviewing. Is that a correct assessment?
That's correct, unless you have a neighbor that may be calling our office.
Which, on a complaint basis, in effect. Now, let me ask you another question. So if my taxes should go up, you know, fairly, if I put $600 worth of, 600 square feet of improvements, or if I build a new barn on my property, you know, fairly, I should be paying what my neighbors are paying and what everybody else in the county is paying. And, but does anybody come to you and say, you know, I've got my tax bill and I think it's a bit low? Can you reassess that for me?
We actually do occasionally do have people do that. And there's two results. One, we do reviews of properties on request. And also, when we do find in the structure or addition that has been built, we do go back five years plus current year in most circumstances to collect the back taxes.
But it's not very often. I threw you a softball and you hit a foul ball on that one. So I'll try that again. When you do, I see long lines down at the tax window downstairs certain times of the day when people have the tax bills. Are they typically coming in to say you're taxing them too much?
They are typically just paying their taxes. And they are complaining, they're complaining their taxes are usually high. But the majority are not complaining their taxes are too low.
Okay. So I guess to follow up on Commissioner Woodvile's vision, Lichen, you're doing yeoman's work, underfunded by the agency, the state, that should be giving you more to collect the money to distribute through 83 different taxing agencies, several of which are school districts and several of which are municipalities inside of the county. Okay, thank you, Mr. Coles.
Any further questions? So do we have a motion to approve the order? Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move to approval of Order 15-14-21-09 on the matter of approving submission of the County Assessment Function Funding Assistance, better known as CAFA Grant Application to the Oregon Department of Revenue for FY 2015-16.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the CAFA grant application. Commissioner Sorensen.
Thanks a lot. You know, one of the things that's concerning me about this is that we are in this annual cycle of asking for the Oregon Department of Revenue to provide additional funds. But the funding from the state is inadequate. The amount of money that the county puts into it is inadequate. The county could, if it wanted to, go out to voters and ask for more money, could face an uphill fight. Gee, we need more money so we can, you know, come by and assess your property more than once every 20 years in terms of a visual inspection. Not very popular, not likely to go very far. We could divert funds away from other crucial services that I'm not willing to do, probably the board isn't willing to do, which is why we haven't done it. So we're in this kind of constant, you know, nagging the state and the state constantly saying, hey, we're giving you what we can. I guess, I'm just curious, Mike, do you see any other alternative than this every-year conversation that goes pretty much as it's gone this year? Do you see any alternative to that? What actually could we do in terms of getting this beyond this kind of conversation?
I believe that probably the most reasonable approach would be a funding model where the districts that we do collect the taxes for do contribute a very.
We had a bill that did that about five, six years ago. And that was killed by the coalition of the beneficiaries of the current system, namely, the school districts. And that ended that.
One of the thoughts that I've had on that is that if, through either a trial period or through the implementation of such bill, would be for value-added as a result of additional funding. The percentage is based on that. That might quieten some of the opposition to that.
Why would there be less opposition?
Because additional funding would result in additional funds for those districts. And the percentage that goes to assessment taxation would be only based on the additional money that's raised via those funds.
Oh, by reassessing the properties?
Exactly.
Mm-hmm, okay. Is there a proposal like that in the current legislature?
I have not seen that one.
Okay. Is that something the Assessors Association is promoting?
Not at this time, but I can look into that.
Yeah, okay. I think that would be good. And the other thing is, I'll throw this out as an option. And that is, it's been a long time since we've had a meeting with our Lane County legislators. And I'm just throwing this out for the board that since this is a fairly discreet and, you know, and recurring problem, we might consider literally going up to Salem and having a meeting, if we can, if that's allowed by the open meetings law. If it's not, maybe we could accommodate the legislators' schedule during the remainder of the session and try to schedule some Saturday meeting with them while they're back here for a day. Because it is possible, in the current legislature, to actually have a sit-down with them and say, this is really a problem. It's been a problem for many years. What can you do to help? Many of them are, many of our local legislators are in the leadership. Our county's obviously not the only county that's dealing with this. Oh, one final question. What other counties have turned back this responsibility to the state?
I believe none of the counties have turned back.
Not even Josephine County or Curry County?
The only county that I know that is taking on more of the responsibilities is Maloma County, which they've taken on many of their primary and secondary industrial accounts. However, that they still receive similar CAFA funds.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Pass as unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Coles.
Thank you.
So I'm going to bring us back to our 10 o'clock time, certainly a couple minutes late here, which is Item 6A. It's a report, a status report on the work of the Large Events Task Force. And we have Mike Russell from Parks. Mr. Russell.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Russell, Lane County Parks and Animal Services Manager. We're here this morning to give you an update on the status of the Large Events Task Force that you created back in March 11th of 2013. Have with me today our Chair, John Helmer. We also have in the audience two members, Anna Lawrence and Mary Moore. I just, generally, I want to give John enough time to give his presentation. He has a few words. But I did want to say that, in general, staff is pleased with the process and how it's going. We anticipate, I think, pretty solid recommendations from this group for you to consider in the future. We'll be presenting that to the county administrator. I think John will talk more about this as soon as we can get it to you. And so in general, I just wanted to say that I'm pleased with the process. We've met 11 times. Our first meeting was on June 23rd, 2014. And we meet the second Wednesday of every month. And there are now 14 individuals that make up the task force. And you can see them there in your memo. We have had one public input session. We have, I think, done extensive efforts to try to get information to the public and get them notified that this process is happening and that we're wanting feedback into the process. We've used online resources for SurveyMonkey surveys or even Engage Lane County. We've used, we're kind of the inaugural survey on that tool. We've done a public opinion survey. We've done a guest viewpoint in the Register Guard, those kinds of things. So we've done pretty extensive outreach to the public, trying to get their feedback. I think our Chair will go into more of the actual products that are coming out of the task force. And so I just want to turn it over to him for the remainder of the presentation.
All right, thanks, Mike. You hear me okay? Close enough? All right.
Very good.
It's a real pleasure to be here, to talk to you Commissioners. My, you know, to boil it down, my real point in being here is to give you an update on the work that you initiated a year ago, give you a sense of what we've been doing, where we're headed next. Take any questions from you, of course. And then also, just any advice you have for the task force as it gets to the finish line here. I think the first thing to say is that it's a fairly challenging task that you've set out for us. As we all know, this issue really came to the fore with Howard Buford Recreation Area as this catalyst, if you will. But the charge of the task force, which some forget, is to look at appropriateness and rules and so forth, make recommendations for all county parks, all 70 county parks, if you will. So that is pretty mind-bending when you start to think about the different aspects of those parks, their sizes. Some are very developed, some are more natural areas. Some, of course, are not appropriate for large events at all. So we've boiled it down to 13 parks that we're looking at that can potentially host events of 1,000 or more. And as Mike says, we've been meeting. Next month, we will have passed our one-year mark. So we've been at this for quite a while. And I think, again, another thing people don't necessarily realize is the work happens, quite a lot of work happens between the meetings in terms of research, talking to individuals, as I'll report here. So quite an effort, to be frank. We will be somewhat later than we hoped in terms of delivering a report to you. We originally were hoping for, planning for June. We're certainly going to be July. And I think even that will be, assuming we have, you know, things proceed right along. A couple of things I wanted to mention that we've done. A lot of our work in the first several months was really educating ourselves and gathering information. We had some great overview reports from Park staff about all of the different parks and their characteristics. And then we went out and invited quite a number of guests to address the task force. They came in, gave a presentation, and entered into a question-and-answer period with the task force. These included Andy Clark, the Assistant County Counsel for Lane County, Matt Laird, the Land Management Division Manager, again, for Lane County, Steve McCoy, who is the Farm and Forest Staff Attorney for the Thousand Friends of Oregon, Lori Segal-Vatcher, the Board Member for Lane Watch, Lane County, Tom Lanfair, Land Use Consultant and Retired Lane County Planner, and Chris Orsinger, Executive Director of the Friends of Buford Park in Mount Piscata. So those were specific invited presentations and Q&amp;A with the task force. As Mike indicated, I think one of our hallmarks and one of the things that we've really tried to emphasize is public input. We've really tried to make this as open a process as possible. So some of the things we've done, we take comments both before and after every meeting because we heard from people that they really wanted a chance to comment on what they heard. We have people come, you know, from the public and sit through a two-hour task force meeting. You figure they have a couple of minutes at the end to say something. So we do that. The website is extensive. There's a library there of all of the surveys, documents, reports, master plans, et cetera, et cetera. It's quite a resource in and of itself. As Mike indicated, we did a public input, special public input session hosted in, I believe that was in October. And we, as a counterpart to that, we created just an open web forum for people to just get on there and type in whatever comments they had. We heard from 340 people running the gamut of different opinions, which is pretty amazing. I think part of what you see throughout this is how much people love their parks and how much they are involved in thinking about them. So the topic is important. We also used Engage Lane County at that point, which was just launched at that time. We collaborated with Parks and Eco Northwest on a formal, more scientific survey that had over 700 responses of 40% return rate, which is great for that sort of thing, and gave us quite a range of data about how the public perceives large events in our county parks. For this special input session, we did a lot to publicize it. As Mike mentioned, the two of us collaborated on a piece that ran in the Register Guard. I was interviewed on several radio stations. We had radio promo pieces, a couple of TV stations, email to participants, letters to the editor, all that sort of thing went into the arrangements for that event. And thank you very much to your Chair for. into the arrangements for that event. And thank you very much to your Chair for attending as well. I don't know if you remember, way back in October.
I remember.
Being part of that. So. And we have a second special session planned for the future. Our hope is that we will have something close to some draft recommendations, so something pretty solid for people to react to, and then engage in another public input session. So, what, you might ask, are we finding out? What are we deciding? Well, I guess I'll start by saying it's too soon for me as Chair to say that. We are in the midst of sifting through quite a list of proposals and recommendations. So, don't know yet, but that is, we're definitely in the meat of that process now. I think what I can say is that you're not going to receive a report that's very extreme, that, you know, and if you look at the survey results, you look at the popular, you know, the public input we've received, it's that sort of classic bell curve. So you've got some fairly small tails of very strong opinions, either no events, or let it rip, do whatever, and the middle ground of people who are saying, yes, the right kinds of events in the right places at the right times, the right number of them in a given year, fitting the particular park, and with impacts mitigated, including things like the number of days, hours per day, camping, volume levels, all those sorts of things. So I think that's squarely where the task force is headed, is towards this very balanced view and recognizing the diversity of these parks, which, again, they are very different in terms of what is possible. We did adopt five principles, which are, four of them are in your packet. There's a fifth one on public safety, which is sort of late-breaking, more recently adopted. I'm not going to read through these, you can have a look, but, you know, they're related to mission, revenue, legality, policy, appropriateness, and this last one on safety. And I think, you know, I just want to emphasize, when I say we're going to have a balanced report, I think if you look at the language of these, you get a sense of the task force. I'll just pick topic number four, appropriateness, which is that large events can be appropriate in some Lane County parks, but only if requirements limit their frequency, duration, impact on neighbors, environmental qualities, and other park users. So it is definitely in this sense of, yes, this can go forward if it's well-managed and specific to each park and its needs. I think what you can expect is a report that has some overarching principles that require management and, you know, frankly, human intelligence and decision-making to implement some overarching principles that apply to all parks, but then also perhaps some specific recommendations about rules for a given park, or a couple of them, maybe. And here, I think in particular, it might be that there are some things we know about Howard Buford Recreation Area, because it's a regional park, because it has a master plan, because so much attention has been placed on that. We may have something a little more specific in that area, although it's too soon to know. But certainly overarching principles. And then I think another piece that we need to grapple with, which is of great interest to the task force, is who grapples with these issues? Who thinks about the applications and what is appropriate for any given park? What is the oversight body there, if you will? And I think there's an understanding that we need some kind of a function, without getting too bureaucratic, we need some kind of a function that's efficient, that has the expertise of parks, but also involves the other stakeholders in terms of the nonprofits that are active for any given park, neighbors and others, in looking at the plans for that park. So what, you know, what would this group be? So I'll wrap it up by saying, and I think here I speak for, you know, certainly for myself, but also my task force members, I hope you have the sense that we worked extremely hard, to be frank, and both during meetings and between meetings. My, you know, back-to-the-envelope estimate would be that we probably have around 800 hours of volunteer time invested in this effort now. And what's very important to me is that you feel that we are exercising due diligence, that we are taking the public input, that we are covering all the ground, so that when you get this report, you can say, you know, job well done, you've come forward with something that we can strongly endorse and adopt. And so I, you know, if there's anything you can do for me, it's, or for us, it's to tell us, what more do we need to do? What are you looking for to make sure this is a report that you can support? So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Commissioner Farr.
Comment first and a question. I'm looking at the makeup of the task force. You have 14 members currently, and a large number of them are involved because of what you called the catalyst event, which was the Buford Park Recreation Area. That's appropriate, I believe, because that really is one of our largest parks, one of our most prominent parks, and one that has probably the broadest range of mixed uses that are associated with it. And in looking at the minutes that you provide, very good minutes, who takes minutes? Good job.
Thank you.
Very thorough. Looks like you have a pretty good attendance, generally speaking, from the committee also. And I am very satisfied personally with the work that I'm hearing that you're doing, that you are looking at the broad spectrum of parks. You have, what is it, 13 parks in the county that you're looking at, including Zumwalt Park, which is kind of an unused gem that we have out in Commissioner Bozovic's district. And, you know, the fact that we do have public places that are attractive for larger events, or for medium-sized events, or for events in general, but also for the daily family outings, which is really what I believe the parks are mainly intended for, you know, take your family out for time in the park. But the interesting kind of a juxtaposition that we have here is that we also consider large events on private property, and that's a large part of a consideration. In fact, I think today, later on, we'll be talking about large events on private property. So a question that I have for you is, did it come up at all, how to balance public large events versus private large events? Was that any part of the discussion at all? I wouldn't expect that it would be a part of the charge, but did that come up in discussion at all?
Mm-hmm. It has, and the task force has not, you know, reached any solid conclusions. I think there's overall a sense of there needs to be fairness, if you will, that the county needs to play by rules that are similar to the private sector, and needs to be a good neighbor, which I think is what those rules are about. And, you know, for some too, the question of not being in competition with the private sector too is a question too, in that there are venues that are on private land, there are venues that are in public land, and it ought to be at least an even playing field. I did want to mention, we are very cognizant of the makeup of the task force, which, as you say, it's appropriate that there's heavy involvement by people with HBRA direct knowledge, but we are also very cognizant of the fact that we need to do that outreach to other parks. And that's why we've, one of the reasons we've worked so hard, and in particular, I've heard, unfortunately, a little late in the game, but recently from Zumwalt area, and in fact, I'll be meeting with one of the Zumwalt neighbors tomorrow. So that's an important aspect of our work.
Philip, comment, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Very briefly, that, you know, Lane County is well-documented as the size of Connecticut. And looking at the umbrella that you've cast with the Large Events Task Force, you've done a good job of covering Connecticut pretty well.
Thank you.
And it's a, it's not a small task, and it's something that is well-documented, been overdue for this sort of analysis. And I'm looking, and I want to commend you personally, Mr. Helmer, and Ms. Lawrence and Ms. Moore are in the audience today, and others on the task force. I think the work that you've done has been diligent, it's been patient, and I'm looking forward to the outcome. I think, when I saw the makeup originally, I thought, well, golly, this is a CV loop task force. And that really isn't what it turned out to be. It really is a task force that's covering the entire county with a broad spectrum of interest and a broad spectrum of data gathering. Looking at your website, I invite people who are watching on the air right now to take a look at the website. There's a lot of data there. Any one person can sit and go through hours and hours of analysis and come up with a lot of the same things that you have spent a lot of your personal time. And I look at, looking at the task force, you have professionals on the task force, you have the busy people on the task force, as well as some folks who are retired, perhaps, and some folks who are students. So I think well-represented. The results are, I'm highly anticipatory of seeing the results. And Mr. Russell, you pointed out that the staff is generally very satisfied with the work of the task force. I would concur based upon my observations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Well, first of all, thanks to not only both of you, but also the task force members and the public that's been monitoring what you've been doing, all the people involved with this. It sounds like a pretty big enterprise. I was interested in hearing about the Eco Northwest Large Event Survey, the Salix Associates' Environmental Impacts of the Dirty Dash Study, and the Sandow Engineering Traffic Demand Management Report. Sounds like all those have been received, and did you go over them at the task force?
Go ahead, Mike. Okay. The answer is, on the public opinion survey, yes, the task force has seen the results of that. It is also published on the task force website. Just go to lanecity.org/parks and click on that task force website link. It'll be there. The other two, the Salix report is finished, and the, I think at this point, they broke up into topic groups, and they're each working on those, so that I think the topic group that dealt with environmental impacts has seen that report. The whole committee has not seen that report yet, so we're working to get that finalized and posted on the website. We just received on Monday the report from Sandow, so staff hasn't had a chance to look at it yet. So we'll be presenting that, hopefully, to the task force at the next meeting. So those are coming along and are in various stages of...
Being released.
Being released, correct.
So the, just to reiterate, the Eco Northwest, that's already on the website?
Correct.
The other two aren't, but will be?
Will be.
Okay. Do you have an estimate of when that might be done?
I think the Salix report will be, hopefully, by the end of the week. We'll get that compiled and put on the website. The, like I say, we just received the Salix report, so I think after the next meeting. I haven't talked to the Chair about the next agenda, so we'll talk about that.
Okay. And then, are you going to finish this report, or this work, within the time that the Board required, or do you think this is going to take more time and go out further?
Well, our original deadline was June 23, I believe, and we're definitely not going to make that date.
Okay.
We're looking at at least a month later than that, I hope.
Okay.
And even, as I say, at that, we'll be pushing it. We want to do this in a responsible way. And as you're all aware, you know, when you start to poll people about dates, it gets tough.
Yeah.
And we want to make sure that we're...
We're not accustomed to hearing about that.
Yeah, right.
What do you think, what's the timeline for us to pass some kind of board order that extends that? What's the timeline to do that?
I would say late July, early August.
Oh, so we should be passing something now to get it formally extended?
No, no. Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, it's a county administrator task force.
Oh, so the county administrator would have to do that. Otherwise, it ends being a task force. Okay.
I think our original work plan had this June 23 date on it, but I'm sure, working with...
Okay. And maybe both of you two could respond to this, and that is, what do you anticipate will be the post-report follow-up for the Board of Commissioners? Do you envision making a presentation of it? What do you envision?
I think we envision making a presentation of the results. There's certainly, of course, be a report issued ahead of time. I think we're also quite interested in, let's just make the assumption that you just love everything we came up with. How is that then codified and executed?
We are all team players.
There you go. You know, how is that carried forward? How is that codified? And what is the intersection of this effort with the revision of the master plan for all parks? Or the revised master plan for HBRA? Or, you know, what ends up in a master plan, what ends up in some other form? I don't know the answers to that, but that's where I hope we see not only a good report, but a good execution from there on out.
And from the staff side, I think there would be a time for staff to consider those. Right now, we don't have formal recommendations to consider. As John said, we do have a general feeling for how things are going to go, but we don't have specific proposals to respond to as staff. So I think there would be a time of implementation that we would kind of figure out those things that we would need to, if there is a oversight committee, as John mentioned before, how, what would that look like? So there'd be some time, implementation time, after whatever it is that you direct staff to do. So I'm not sure, is the answer.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate this report and the 800-plus hours of time put into this, and lots of information here. I'm looking at the website that you talked about it being listed. One question I had for you, I noticed that you looked at the HBR, Howard Buford Recreation Area deed. Also curious on those other 12, I guess, sites that look like they could host larger events. Did you review their deeds and make sure there was no deed restrictions in that?
Yeah. We, I believe, and Mike will correct me, but I believe, first of all, I think HBRA is the only one that has a master plan. So the master plan was, you know, specific to the park, was, only that master plan was reviewed. We looked at the zoning. I don't know that we looked at deeds for any other properties, or, but we definitely looked at the Parks Master Plan. We looked at the deed for HBRA and the master plan for HBRA.
So if you look at the website, there is a list of candidate parks. It is a table, and in that table, you'll see columns for things like land use restrictions, deed restrictions, agreement restrictions, if it's a lease from the Corps, for instance, or something, other arrangement that we have with another entity. So that we did, staff did look at all of those different various things and summarized those in that table.
Okay. And it sounds like you're looking at the overall master plan, and what each park probably, you know, like Blue Mountain had a specific, I think, bent towards it. Also produced timber and other aspects for the park system. And so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there wasn't any implied commitments to people as this is what's going to take place out there, you know, because people can vision that, you know, if this is going to be a natural area, what's the definition of natural area? And that's kind of been implied, that this is what, way the park's going to be managed. And then suddenly, now we're going to recommend that Blue Mountain Park is going to potentially host a large event. Does that implied purpose originally, does that conflict, and how should that be dealt with at the board level? I mean, I don't know that it, doesn't mean it can be changed, but how should we consider those potential implied commitments that were given years ago when these parks were established? I think that's included in some of this, but...
It is being considered, yes. It is part of the consideration for these parks. It was kind of a technical analysis, so the political ramifications of those things, yeah, that's right, it's going to be left to you. We do have concern on the task force about how do we reach out to those who are maybe interested in those parks, direct neighbors, those kinds of things. The public opinion survey actually tried to oversample within certain amount of area of those parks, of those 13 parks, to try to get to that. So we feel like the public opinion survey did, and it listed those parks as being considered for this type of activity. So there is, through the public opinion survey, there was kind of that effort. But there's no, the task force hasn't heard, for instance, direct no, the task force hasn't heard, for instance, directly from neighbors of Blue Mountain Park. They have, just have not been able to document comment from those folks. So we're struggling with, how do we, how do we get that without some kind of mass mailing, very expensive mass mailing, or some other way to reach out to folks? So we're, we're still struggling with that, I would say.
I also, just to respond to the question of the master plan, I want to be clear that the large event task force is not, we've read the master plan, which, old one dates from the 80s or something like that, but we're not involved in the revision to that master plan, which is a wholly separate process. Our expectation is that our work will, in some sense, intersect with that, so that large events will be correctly reflected in the master plan. But we are not, you know, in a detailed sense, looking at the master plan revision process right now. If we should, be good to hear about.
Great, thanks.
Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just went on the large events task force website as well, and I'm impressed by the minutes as well. I mean, that's pretty, that's pretty intense, to be honest with you. And so, so I appreciate the work you're, you're involved in here. It's, I think we're all coming to the conclusion, there's no easy answer here to what, and what to expect. So Mike, I don't know if you have this information at all, but say, for instance, the two, the two events that happened in Brownsville and Sweet Home, are those on private lands?
They are.
And do they have camping facilities that they bring in to offset that? And also, are, is there heads and beds that occur here, say, in, in Lane County or Eugene, Springfield, or some of our hotels? Does that occur, do you know?
Related to those events, I'm not sure. We could certainly find that out.
Yeah, be interested in finding.
Yeah, that would be interesting. We didn't look at that specifically, but yes, it does happen on private property. It is a farm field, so they have to bring everything. So camping facilities, restroom facilities, public safety, anything, that all has to be brought in. And they do something similar to what you're considering for mass gatherings. That's how that county handles those things, and they're very similar requirements that you folks are considering or have considered for that. So, yeah, that's what I know about that.
And, and I think, you know, looking back, I think Kaleidoscope puts such a negative taste in, not only the folks that live in Seabee Loop, but I think just a lot of folks in general. I'll say again, I received more emails on that issue than, probably three to one than, than the whole issue that occurred with the previous county administrator. I mean, that was just overwhelming on that. And so I think it's, so I like where the, when I looked at the minutes, I like the conversation because I think sometimes when thinking about the large mass gatherings, we, we focus so much on musical events, that type of thing. But I think there's, there's really opportunity maybe to get away from that in, in particular. For instance, obviously, the amphitheater in Eugene fills a terrific need during the summer. Well, Amalene Park and Recreation, they have a very good stage over at Island Park. My wife and I at the, every year ago, to Timberland in Albany, and where they have the air, the hot air balloon show, and, which has been very successful, plus they have some great concerts, Styx and Thorn, or, anyway, it doesn't really come to mind. So I, I think there's, there's opportunities really to look. So when you think of mass gatherings, I like where a lot of this is going, because I think what happens is we get in our minds, it's some sort of, you know, three-day music event. And it doesn't necessarily have to be that. And so I think as, as long as it's, well, I like the conversation with the neighbors, but I do have a, maybe a quantifying question, and that is the, when I looked at the, hang on a second here, at the mission, and, there we go. So, large events can fit mission in Lane County parks that properly manage us to their frequency and impact on neighbors, environmental qualities. What, what did you mean by that? Because I think people could have a lot of perception. So what was your, what was the overall tone, and what was your thoughts on, on that, on that piece?
I think it's more impact to the park, so leaving it better than you found it kind of stuff. And identifying if there are rare or endangered species that may be impacted. Time of year can have an impact related to environmental impact, those kinds of things. So in, in general, it's more of the environmental resources that may be at a particular site, making sure those are preserved.
Good.
Okay. And I just want to emphasize that aspect of the particular site. There just is no cookie-cutter approach here if you look at this range of parks. It's very different.
And I would say, I agree with you, Commissioner. Every event is different. We get requests for sporting events, we get requests for car shows, we get request, you know, there, there's just a whole suite of types of events that can happen at these facilities, and we don't want to necessarily preclude any of them. Certainly, I think there's universal agreement, we don't want another kaleidoscope type of that.
I would agree with you on that.
If I can just follow up on that, I think one thing we need to be sure not to do is boil the whole issue down to one event, kaleidoscope, because the, you know, for many, it's, it's much more than that. Even more successful events displace other uses of parks. If you're, if you're trying to ride your horse and you go to a park where there's a very nice, large event going on, that's not disturbing anybody, it still displaces that use. And there's the question of how many events in a year set up takedown, impact on farm income, if there's, you know, if that's a part of the picture too. So it's, it would also be, I know you're not doing this, but it would also be wrong to, to say that this is all about a mistake that was made with kaleidoscope. There is still a bigger, a bigger issue here, and I think that's, that's why the task force's work is, is important and much needed.
Yes, but the task force, I think you could say was predicated on, based on that, that event, and I think just kind of open it up to see where, what, what, what opportunities may exist here. So, really good work. I'm, I'm very impressed. And, you know, I just was able to skim kind of through the minutes, and you're, you're really getting into this, and I think I just, I can't say thank you enough to the entire task force, can't thank you enough to staff on the work that you're doing on this. I'm confident that when that, when we, when this comes to fruition, that we're going to really get a good, good detailed report that'll benefit all of Lane County. So I thank you so much for the work you're doing.
Thank you. So I first want to make a quick comment, that, you know, Zumwalt may be gated most of the year. It is used by lots of folks as, as a natural park right now. You can still park where the gate, where it is gated, and I've walked my dogs in there many a time, and I've run into many a person. But there is annual use by the city of Benita rents, leases that from us for a campground for the, during country fair. And, and that is probably enough people on that site to be considered a large event in itself, just the campground. So, yeah, that's, that's, some, some things actually may not, you may not think of them traditionally as a large event, but you put, you know, several hundred people camping for the length of the country fair, and, you know, shuttle buses running in and out and everything else. You know, that's, that's a fairly, you know, it's been an annual large event held at that particular park, park every year, that doesn't meet the tradition, you know, it's not a music venue, it's not, you know, not an advertised event, but I think, you know, the folks in the area would definitely say there's, you know, there's an impact to that event, and it's something that, you know, we need to look at. And that's kind of leads me to some of my questions. I did get to attend the public input session, and it was kind of unfortunate that we didn't have, I was expecting it to be packed. Yeah, I was really, you know, and it was, and I was surprised at how few people actually did show up to give it. And that was after all the notice you guys did and outreach. So one of the things on outreach I was thinking about in particular is I was trying to think of, you know, some of these more now natural parks that don't have a lot of neighbors to even reach out to, that it may be more appropriate to do a posting at the park of some kind, of signage of, you know, similar to what you do with, you see the zoning notices out, you know, notice of a pending decision, basically, you know, as, as it gets close to that final public input session, you know, a notice of a pending decision on large events management that concerns this, you know, park. You only have 13 to post, it shouldn't be that hard to do if it went up a couple weeks in advance. That may be a way of reaching some of those neighbors, you know? Nothing like throwing up one of those big zoning notices to have somebody's head whip around as they drive by. So, because people are used to seeing those and understand that usually means something's going to go on here, you know, that I might want to pay attention to. And it's interesting that you made a comment earlier about how are we going to, who's going to be the arbitrator of what's an appropriate event, and how's that process going to work? And I think that was a very key comment, because it is, how, if we are going to manage our parks, and some of them for large events, and some of them already have them, you know, Richardson Park already has a triathlon that happens there every year, you know, and Zumwalt has the campground, you know? We have, we, we have events in these parks already. How do we decide which ones are appropriate? How do we do it in an efficient enough manner that somebody can get through the process quickly enough that they, they can then advertise them, you know, book the park, you know, in advance? You know, they don't, we don't want to be spending a year giving somebody permission to use the park for a family reunion, you know? So how do we go about that? It's going to be really key, and I appreciate that, that task force is kind of looking at this diversity of facilities, and they got, out of our 70, they've, they've identified 13 potential parks, and interesting that five out of 13 are leased from the Corps of Engineers. And four out of the 13 are around Fern Ridge Lake, you know? Which, you know, which, and as you noticed, a lot of those facilities around Fern Ridge are already used for fairly large events. I mean, Orchard Point regularly gets used for large reunions. And I've, I've actually had it for a bicycle event, where that was the, the lunch stopover for a bicycle event, where we had like 600 people come through in a single day. So it's interesting, you know, it'll, the real challenge, and this is where, you know, I want to give you some input that might help guide the committee, is establishing that lower limit. You know, you're talking about events, you know, of about 1,000 people or something like that for large events. What's the lower end? What doesn't have to go through that governance process to use a park? You know, I, I've been to events at Armitage regularly that were, you know, one was, was awake for, for somebody that had passed away, another, you know, was, you know, a function, a work function, where, where they were basically having a, a, a summer party there for a company. You know, are those events big enough to trigger, trigger the extra process of a large event? You know, where's that lower limit? Something we've really struggled with here as a board also, as we were looking at outdoor mass gathering, possible changes to our code, where's that lower limit? And we're, you know, going to be hearing about private venues probably this afternoon, and, and particularly in wedding venues. You know, where do you draw that limit as to what, what is, what triggers the need for additional permitting, what triggers the need for additional governance? And that's going to be, I think, one of the most difficult tasks that the task force face, is drawing out that, that lower limit line. I mean, if it's, if it's every event, you know, that ever comes to a park that's more than, than four people in a single, you know, family unit, we'll never be able to govern that. So, you know, figuring out where that line is, is almost as difficult as figuring out what's appropriate for an individual park. You know, what's appropriate at Howard Buford is different from what's appropriate at Zumwalt, which, which, which is different than what's, you know, appropriate, you know, in some of the other parks. And then even then, it's, you know, it may be that that lower limit is different for each park, because each park has differences. So that, that's going to be a real challenge for you, but I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the work you all are doing. I saw it in action that, that night, and I like that you've been able to, you know, expand the focus and not be solely about what happened at Howard Buford and Emerald Meadows. You know, and that, that's not the entire conversation anymore, and it's, it's about all the park system. And guiding, and, and doing a wonderful job of gathering a whole bunch of information about 13 very diverse parks, and a whole bunch of information about, you know, you've gotten input from, from legal experts on both sides of the spectrum, you've got studies coming into you, and boiling it all down and giving our board a recommendation for policy moving forward. I really appreciate the work you guys are doing, 800 hours estimated now, I bet it's actually more than that. And, and by the time you guys get done, it's going to be, you know, well into the thousands of hours probably of time, that you all have voluntarily donated to your community to help guide us in this, you know, very serious issue, you know, of correctly managing our parks for the benefit of all, trying to fit the middle of that bell curve. It's difficult, because there's always going to be that little piece on either end that's not going to be happy with you. And you're probably, and they're going to be very vocal about how they're not happy with you. And it's resisting either side's pull and trying to come to the happy middle and giving us a good recommendation. And I can't tell you how appreciative I am as a board member that you guys are doing this work.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. You summed a lot of things up in that, in your statement there. You know, I wanted to point out a, a couple of things that Commissioner Bozovic touched on. You mentioned Orchard, Orchard Point, and the, and Richardson Parks, which are adjacent to the Fern Ridge Dam. Now, the Fern Ridge Dam represents about the most highly disturbed a piece of property can be. It's a dam, you know, it's a Corps of Engineers dam, it's flooded. And Zumwalt Park is where Royal Avenue, which goes into Fern Ridge Lake, over close to where I live, comes out at Zumwalt Park, you know? Everything's very highly disturbed there. Orchard Point is a, it's a great park. When I was with Jerry's, when we, when I first started at Jerry's, we used to get the, have the annual picnic on a company hayride on one haywagon. Well, it got bigger, and we, when I was there, I always planned the picnic at Orchard. And, and we had a lot of people, and it was more than just the employee and spouse, it was the employee, spouse, family, and we approached 1,000 people, I'm sure of it, quite often. And the, the nature of Orchard, we didn't really disturb everything else that was going on. There was a sale board concession there, for instance, at the time, always softball games going on, and still plenty of room for families to enjoy their family outing. And the marina, everything was all happening in one place. Whereas there's another park, Buford, which you're very familiar with, which is similar in size, it's a very big park, but very, very different in nature. So understanding the difference in nature between Orchard and Buford, and Zumwalt and Armitage, and, and the parks in Cottage Grove, you know, it's, everything is different. And that's one thing that I really truly appreciate about looking at your website, is that you've taken all of that into account. It's a great website. I want to invite people to, to go to it. And, you know, you mentioned, Mr. Helmer, that you think that the, the master plan was, was in the 1980s. I know from your website that it was 1980. It's right there on the website, hold it, make it right there. So, very well done. And I do have one final question for you, Mr. Russell. Can you tell me, you're, you're the Parks Division Manager, you're in charge of parks, lots of other things, animal services, for instance, many, many other things that you're, that you're tasked to do. Who staff, besides you, who staffs this committee? You take the minutes, for crying out loud.
Yeah, I take the minute, we have Fraser McDonald, who's our Natural Areas Coordinator, who's on, attends the meetings, as well as Dave Stockdittler, Parks Analyst.
Okay. So it's a relatively small number of staff people that are helping you, Mr. Helmer, and your, your task force to gather a great deal of information. And I'll point out once again, if you go to the website, this is a wealth. It's called a task force library. It is a library. I mean, you've got a library that it would take a lot of hours to sit down and read all of the information, but you can pick out some very specific information as you, as you want it. For instance, the Ferry World contract is on here, and other things on there, lift a link to pre-draft public comments and park master plan update. I don't know that I've ever seen that kind of detail coming from a task force before in my, you know, my relatively short period of time with the, with the county commission, but I spent 10 years with the Eugene City Council also. And the work you're doing is broad, and it's very well done. And I personally am highly satisfied with the direction that you're going in, highly satisfied with the nature and depth of the work that's going on. I'll say once again, I'll concur with staff, and that work is going in the direction that, beyond the direction that I hoped it would go. It's a, it's a very large task that you have, it's a large charge that you have. And if I look at the charge, it's a charge with the responsibility of developing, recommending to the Board of Commissioners operational policies to be applied, and the next line is very critical, all Lane County parks. How many parks do we have, Mr. Russell?
68.
Right now? 68 parks. Keep it up. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Well, but just by way of thanks, I want to say, I, I think we've, we've worked really well together and that's been a rewarding part of this. And one name that hasn't come up is, is County Administrator Steve Mokrheisky, who hit the ground running in the midst of this and has also been very attentive and, and we've met and talked and so I want to acknowledge him as well. Thanks for paying attention to this along with the many, many other things going on in the county.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions or comments from the board?
Well, I want to thank you for coming and keep up the good work and I guess we'll expect to hear from you in late summer, it sounds like.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Okay, jumping back into our agenda here, we're at item nine, County Council. And I don't know if we've surprised our council or if he's popping through the door right now. One thing I will note under announcements that we do have need for an executive session today and if we can wrap up this morning quickly enough, I'll try and fit it in this morning before lunch break. So we have Mr. Voorhees here, Assistant County Counsel. Or, go ahead.
Good morning, gentlemen. I am here primarily in case you have questions. This is only a first reading of the ordinance that will seek to address the issues raised and remanded to the county by the latest Board of Appeals in its decision of February of last year on your Goshen Goal 14 exception to allow urban levels of industrial and related commercial use in the unincorporated community of Goshen. So all we really need is the first reading and setting the second reading in public hearing on May 12th of 2015, unless you have questions.
Okay, so we've kind of moved right into item B, which is that first reading and setting the second reading in public hearing. And you said that needs to be, you're looking for May 12th is the date? Commissioner Stewart.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the first reading and set this, setting the second reading in public hearing for ordinance number PA 13-17 on the matter of amending ordinance number PA 1282 to adopt additional findings addressing Luba remand issues and supporting statewide planning Goal 14 reasons exception to allow urban levels of industrial development on the existing rural industrial zone lands in Goshen and adopting savings and suborbitality clauses filed PA 12-05232, setting the second hearing for May the 12th, 1:30 PM at Harris Hall.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing, oh, Commissioner, I can.
Just real quickly, not necessarily on the motion, but the motion, but I do want to say to Mr. Voorhees, you're looking very good, so glad you're here and your health, health's looking, looking very solid, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion in the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And for the record, under a, no more announcements. I think Mr. Dingle indicated that earlier, but I'll reiterate, no, no announcements other than the one you already made.
Thank you. So we'll move on to County Administration. Mr. Mokrheisky, announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. You have a couple of brief things I'll share with you. Commissioner Bozovic and I had an opportunity last Wednesday to spend the better part of the day in Florence and I can report to you that Commissioner Bozovic fell at all.
Steve, can you pull your mic up a little bit?
Sure.
I'm seeing the usual head tilt, it's not coming through.
Is this okay?
Yep.
All right. I turned the volume down and now it's hard to hear. As I was saying, Commissioner Bozovic and I spent the better part of Wednesday in Florence and had an opportunity to speak to the Florence Kiwanis, as well as join Bob Sneddon on his radio show and talked about a number of issues, including our vehicle registration fee in the May ballot. So that was good as we continue our outreach throughout Lain County. We also, I'll be on KPNW on Friday morning, talking about the ballot measure and other issues. Last week, we had a, an equity summit. We do equity summits twice a year for our organization. I've attended now three. The first one was in my first week on the job and I had another one about six months ago and then we had one last week. We had a professor from the University of Oregon Law School who talked about implicit bias and the difference, of course, between explicit bias, things like racism and sexism that are overt, and then implicit bias, the sort of inherent biases that everybody, that all of us have in us. And it was a really thoughtful discussion. I just wanted to share with the board that we continue to have a focus on equity inclusion and diversity work in our organization. Again, we do two equity summits per year. We have a committee, Equity and Education Committee of staff and leaders throughout the organization that have set goals that are consistent with the board's strategic plan. If you recall, the board has identified equity and access as a, as an objective and a goal that you're interested in us continuing to focus on. So we continue that work. We've identified goals and strategies that we're pursuing. We're having really good discussions. I was pleased that of the three equity summits that I've attended in the past year, this was the, we continue to see growing interest and participation. I want to say we had somewhere between around 70 of our employees that participated and it was located at Trillium Health. And we spent about four hours of our time working together, talking about really important topics and doing this training and we will continue that effort. So I wanted to thank our employees that took the time to, to attend and participate in that session and I want to share again with the board that we continue to be invested in equity work in our organization. We also have a meeting next week where we've invited around 25 individuals in the community that represent different areas of our, of our community to come and, and talk with us next week in the evening with a number of our leaders in the organization on how we can continue to enhance and expand our equity and access work outside of the scope of, of the internal work we're doing in our, in our community. So this is again, a, a goal that the board has set to say, let's not only continue with the work internally in our organization, let's see how we can partner with individuals and organizations in our community to extend that work outside our organization. So we'll report back to you, but I just want you to know that that effort continues and, and we continue to make progress there. We have a, I have a lunch, as I do once a month, lunches one Friday a month with, in different departments throughout Lain County. Any employees and commissioners are welcome to attend. This Friday, we'll have lunch with the County Administrator and with County Council staff. And again, any employees and commissioners are welcome to attend and it's just an opportunity for us to break bread and talk about things that are happening and, and continue to have a pulse on the organization and the great work that our employees are doing. Finally, I want to share real quickly, we are an executive team that's gone through the leadership practices inventory and sent some emails out to the commissioners and this is a 360 evaluation. We're working with the business school, the University of Oregon Business School to do train, a 360 evaluation and training for our executive team and, and for my direct reports that manage other people in making sure that we're evaluating all the leadership capabilities that we have, where we're spending a lot of time where we're maybe not spending as much time as, as we should. And so I'll bring more of this forward to you when we do my annual review and I just wanted to share with you that we did mostly all-day training last Friday with our team and the University of Oregon Business School to continue that effort to foster a culture of leadership and continuous improvement throughout our organization. That's it. Unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Then we'll move on to item B, which is a report and update from the 41015 Legislative Committee Meeting. And we have Alex, Alex, Alex Kyler, our Intergovernmental Relations Manager. Mr. Kyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before you, you should have a board packet that has a couple of items in it that are, came out of our Legislative Committee Meeting, which was held, not this immediate past Friday, but the Friday before that. Mr. Chair, there's, there's, there's two different items that you sort of got before you. One is a list of bills that we went over and then there's three letters for approval. Do you care?
You want to do the, the three letters first in that way? Because I think those would be fairly short to get the board's approval of and I think the long list of bills may involve a lot more discussion. Thank you. Okay. So Commissioners, there's three letters before you. They are attachments B, C, and D to the packet and so I'll just start in that order. Attachment B is a letter to the co-chairs of the Subcommittee, the State Subcommittee of Ways and Means on Public Safety. So these are your budget writers for the Department of Corrections, the Oregon Judicial Department, Oregon Youth Authority, those kinds of public safety agencies. We are in particular, have been struggling for a couple of years with some dollars that come through the Oregon Judicial Department that come to the counties for the purposes of family mediation services via court fees. So they're essentially fees that are assessed at the court, come through the Judicial Department and they get transferred to the counties. In the old days, that was, there was a fee to support those programs that the board set in conjunction with the presiding court judge. You last raised that fee in 2010 to be implemented in 2011 and unfortunately during the 2011 session, that whole system got wiped out and replaced with an appropriation to counties to fund this service. As a result of that action, Lain County in particular got sort of stuck in an old funding model, right? I mean, we just, they based their funding on the historical lookback. Well, that historical lookback involved what the presiding court judge and the staff deemed has not enough funding and had come to you in 2010 to raise that fee. So essentially, we weren't the only county that got trapped in that. The metro counties of Clackamas, Washington and Monloma County were also subject in that same, caught up in that same sort of unfortunate circumstance. We've been trying for a couple of years to actually rectify that. We've tried various bills. On the Budget Committee, you probably recognize that you can make a transfer of some law library funds over to support family mediation. This, what's really necessary is that there just be an increase in the appropriation for family mediation programs. So we're undertaking a sort of a joint effort with Clackamas, Monloma and Washington Counties to send letters from our Board of County Commissioners to the co-chairs, reminding them of this dynamic and a request that they actually just increase that appropriation. The, the context for this is that the Ways and Means Committees are beginning what they call their Phase Two Conversations in Salem. So they've gone through sort of the governor's recommended budget and what the Legislative Council drafted for budgets, gotten a bunch of feedback through public hearings and conversations with the committee members. Now comes back the Phase Two Conversation and what we're trying to do is make sure that this letter hits just in time for the Phase Two Conversation so that we can, we can sort of strategically get this issue in front of them. So it's just a fairly simple letter outlining kind of a complicated background of. Any questions about the letter? Can I get a motion and to approve the sending a letter so I can sign it and all right?
Sure. I move approval of sending the letter.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Sounds like we have unanimous vote for that letter.
Okay. Moving on to attachment C then. This is a, similar to a letter you approved several weeks ago to Congressman Defazio for his work during the lead up to the, what's called the Doc Fix, it was HR2, that was recently signed by the president. This is a thank you letter to Speaker John Boehner, who allowed the title to be included in the Doc Fix. It was an important title, obviously, for us and it addressed two additional years of funding for secure rural schools. A simply a thank you.
Move approval.
Second, and if I might.
Commissioner Stewart.
Alex, I want to thank you for crafting this letter and for the board chair. This has been expressed to me multiple times, whether it's our ONC lobbyist back in DC or AOC, that recognition and thank you to Speaker Boehner's, very, very important. He played a critical, critical role in allowing this to be attached to that Medicare Access Act. So thank you for crafting this.
Any further discussion?
Commissioner Sorenson. What's the timing on the approval, the signing?
The signing of the letter or the bill?
No, the bill.
Chairman Bozovic, Commissioner Sorenson, I believe that, that the president signed it. I'm not, I, I can't say that I actually confirmed it, but I did look the other day because there was a conversation about whether, or in fact, it was going to get signed. It was on his, on its way. He'd made a lot of public statements about, you know, that his pen was ready and so my assumption is that is done, especially given it was a critical time period, if you recall, because there's a 15 day delay.
It was hitting that day or shortly. Could you send a email to the board just with the date of the passage and the date of the signing? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next.
Right, so this, next one is attachment D and this is a letter that continues a conversation with the delegation, our federal delegation, about blue green algae and harmful blooms. Commissioner Stewart had forwarded me an email that he had seen that were changes to the United States Army Corps of Engineers policies with respect to monitoring and testing waters in federal reservoirs for blue green, the presence of blue green algae. And they're essentially making some changes. We felt like it was, it's, it's not a terrible change that the agency is making, but it provides us an opportunity to remind the delegation of the issue that has been sort of a chronic presence in Lain County, these harmful algal blooms. The thinking is, is that they are related to temperature of the water and so I think the, the experts in the field feel like this summer may be another sort of typical summer with blue green algae present at Dexter. Silkus has gotten posted in the past, Fern Ridge has gotten posted in the past, Golden Gardens have been posted. I mean, we've had a lot of postings in Lain County. If you recall, this was actually a success story in our federal priorities. We had this, the, the reauthorization of what's called HABHARCA, which is a, a funding bill to study algal blooms in the marine environment. And in the latest HABHARCA that was actually signed by the president last year, for the first time, they identified freshwater blooms and provided at least the theory of a funding stream to go towards research of freshwater blooms. The interesting thing is, is that we, we no longer are earmarking dollars, but with certain key positions on Ways and Means, we believe that there perhaps is a way to direct at least some of those research dollars into Oregon. We've got a partner up at Oregon State that does a lot of work on blue green algae and has been, will continue to test at Dexter, for example. So this is an opportunity just to simply remind them that with the signing of HABHARCA, the issue is still present and the need is still present and the, the federal resource, while on the one hand has gone up through the provision of the Act elevating EPA to, to having some involvement with freshwater blooms, we're seeing a decline in funding from the Army Corps of, or at least services from the Army Corps of Engineers and the sunset of a grant from CDC that used to help the state with postings of harmful algal blooms. So sort of a, you know, a good, a good and bad in trying to encompass in the letter and just keep this in front of them such that we may be able to influence some funding decisions in the future.
Thank you. Any questions?
Move approval, sending the letter.
Second.
To the motion. Commissioner Farr.
Just a question, looking at the letterhead to the, or the mast to the letter, it's generic to US senators, US reps. Will that be specific? Will that be specific when the letter goes out? This is a draft that we're approving today.
Chairman Bozovich and Commissioner Farr, so what we will do procedural-wise is the Chairman will be sending three letters. One to Congressman DeFazio, one to Senator Markley, and one to Senator Wyden, each individually signed, but with the body of the, body of the letter being essentially the same.
Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Alex, also, what's in this, sending these letters, can you make sure that you reach out to Congresswoman Bonamici's staff? Because I know that she was helpful moving forward a, a bill that actually was passed when they weren't getting along very well. So, so if you could just reach out to her staff just to let her know as well of what our concerns are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, now we move to the multiple bill list. Mr. Kyler.
Okay, so again, these are the, there's a list of bills that we went over in Legislative Committee, and a couple of things, I think, to, just to highlight. There's, I guess, five columns in this table. The position, the recommended position is way over on the right. There's a couple of blanks there. Those are, those are actual measures we didn't get to in committee, so we will, we will pick those up at some, at some future date. The other thing is that today in Salem is the deadline for moving bills out of their committee of origin, so they have to be worked and done by the end of today. So there's been an awful lot of work here over the last several days and all of last week to get sort of this glut of bills through committee. So there's going to be some, I'll give you a little bit of update on some of these measures since we actually had the Legislative Committee meeting. So if I might do that, Mr. Chair, I'll just run through real quick. So Senate Bill 14 is actually, this has been a priority of ours, is to try to lift that local prohibition against cigarette taxes. Because this bill lives in Finance and Revenue, it is actually immune to the rule of moving out of a committee. There's a couple of committees, Rules and Revenue, that, that moving out of a committee date does not apply to. So that one, while there's no action being taken on it, it's not really moving it out of public hearing, but nobody's working it, it still will live through the session because of its position in Senate Finance. Senate Bill 315 has moved to the floor of the Senate. This was a priority for us going into the session. Senate Bill 824 is a, a measure that has to do with eliminating, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and, actually, excuse me, reducing particulate emissions from diesel engines in Oregon, and it wraps in counties and public agencies in a particularly unique way. That bill has actually been moved to Ways and Means now, and has really been changed to become a task force, which is why it's at Ways and Means, because every task force has a fiscal, has fiscal implications for the state agencies that have to staff it. So it is, it is very much changed, but it still ha, will be a task force on diesel emissions.
Is that 824?
That's 824, yeah. 895, the next one. Immunizations have been a very big deal in Lane County because of some of our, the presence of a lot of un-immunized kids in certain parts of the county. This bill has made some press lately. It's being heard today at 1:00, so I don't have an update about what, what will actually happen to it. Senate Bill 941 is a background check bill. It's been in the news a lot lately. It is going to be heard tomorrow in House rules for seven and a half hours.
Wow.
Nine and a half hours if you include the two-hour informational meeting that will occur before it. So it's sort of a never seen before, I don't, I've never heard of a seven and a half hour public hearing before.
It should be a fairly exciting day in Salem tomorrow.
House Bill 2666 is a measure about mining. It's not necessarily the mining priorities that we went into the session with, but we did discuss it in Legislative Committee because it does have a lot of implications for how local governments shall sort of mediate the conflict between mining sites and farm and forest neighbors. And this one is the, it's got a hearing today. Also at 1:00, I'm hearing that it will also move to rules. And so this, this moving to rules means it's a way to keep a bill alive in Salem, because you can move it to a committee that doesn't have these timeframe limitations. And so there was a lot of moving to rules, moving to revenue, moving to Ways and Means in the last couple of days. We, 3100 is a bill that we talked about in Legislative Committee before but haven't brought to the Board, but it is a very big public health bill, reform of public, how public health shall be delivered in the future. And we worked a lot on this measure in Salem with public health advocates. It has now been passed to Ways and Means. So there's some funding questions about it, but we think we've got the policy in really pretty good shape on House Bill 3100. Moving on, we really only got to two additional places with the committee. We barely got to discuss minimum wage bills and the, there's a whole suite of e-cigarette bills. So I, I think I'd leave my sort of update there, Mr. Chair, and you can see the recommendations that the, that the committee recommended, and I'm happy to take any, any questions.
Any questions on the bills?
So I have one quick question on SB 941.
Yeah.
There's some concern that there's a potential unfunded mandate contained in that bill. At least that's what the, the summary says.
Yeah.
And I, my understanding is it's kind of, there's two possibilities of an unfunded mandate. One is the requirement that our sheriff enter in information relative to mental health issues that get adjudicated and passed on. The requirements, the sheriff makes those entries, not the state, and I don't see a funding stream coming with that requirement. The second one is, there's a requirement that the Oregon State Police pass on information about folks that actually attempted to purchase that aren't legal to local law enforcement for further action, and there's no funding that follows that either, is my understanding. Is that, is that an accurate description of the potential unfunded mandates contained in the bill?
Mr. Chair, that's, that's accurate. Those are the two places. I, I think the, the terminology, we sort of need to be careful with that term, unfunded mandate. I mean, unfunded mandate in the context of our principles, I think, means there's, as you described, there's some, there's some requirements that will be borne by counties that don't have a funding stream. The legislature would look at an unfunded mandate as something that actually rises to the threshold of a certain criteria in terms of its fiscal, actual fiscal impact, and it may not pass an unfunded mandate that hits that threshold. So we don't believe that, that the constitutional issue of an unfunded mandate, that, that amount has been reached within this bill, but certainly there will be some additional work that is delivered down to the sheriff's office, and there is no additional funding for that work contained in the bill.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Sorenson.
On Senate Bill 895.
Yeah.
It says it requires schools and children facilities to make available certain information relating to immunizations in public hearing April 9 on Senate Education Committee. Does that legislation provide additional funding to schools or to children facilities to, to do that?
Chairman Bozovich and Commissioner Sorenson, it does not.
So is it, is it an unfunded mandate on schools to provide information about immunizations?
Chairman Bozovich and Commissioner Sorenson, again, the same, same exact discussion I just had on 941. It's, right, there is some additional work that would be borne by not only schools, but potentially our.
Alex, could you pull your microphone towards you?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, sorry. Commissioner Sorenson, there is addition, there will be additional work for both school districts and in some cases, public health authority under this measure if it passes. My, my understanding is that they don't rise to that unfunded mandate language in the Constitution.
It what?
That it does not rise to the level of the unfunded mandate.
Oh.
Language in the Constitution.
Okay. With regard to the second, the one schools, also children facilities, is, is the Lane County Youth Department, a children facilities that provides immunizations? In other words, do the kids in the D Y I system, D Y S system, are they, are they in a children's facility? Is that what that term means? It's not just schools, but?
Chairman Bozovich.
Other public facilities that children are in.
I, I think, I make the wrong, but I think the youth out at MLK would be defined as a school.
School.
For this bill.
Okay.
I don't, frankly, I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't know what children's facility is under the bill. I could look real quick.
Like a youth prison, maybe?
Yeah, or unless it's a, may be a daycare.
Youth Authority?
I don't.
Perhaps Oregon Youth Authority?
We can, I could look real quick if that's appropriate.
Well, I think we have to be careful with the phrase, unfunded mandate. I agree with you, because some of these things in here are in fact, good ideas that don't necessarily bring money with them. And so just to say we're against all unfunded mandates, I think, doesn't necessarily answer for me whether I'm for or against a particular bill.
Chairman Bozovich, Commissioner Sorenson, I think the, you know, as we pass those principles, if you recall, when, you know, sort of trying to get a little bit additional guidance between Legislative Committee and Board meetings, we knew there was going to be some, you know, learning curve of how those principles would apply, and I think this is probably a good example of that, where should we say, you know, unfunded mandate per article, whatever it is in the Oregon Constitution that does not allow the legislature to pass something like that, or?
What is that line, what is that line currently between, because we, we know the Constitution was amended to provide no unfunded mandates. Why are we still having this conversation? What, is it like a big unfunded mandate versus a small, small one?
It's big. And it does.
If it's big, it violates the Constitution.
Yes, and it does take a fair amount of calculation. I think it's, I want to say it's something like greater than 10% of the, you know, aggregate budgets of the local government so affected. It's a, it's a fairly steep.
Okay. Thank you.
You can get a lot of 5% unfunded mandates in, under that definition, and either way, it's still a mandate of local government spending in a time where local governments don't have additional resources, which means we need to cut something else to, to spend that money versus hitting that constitutional threshold. So I, I think there's, whether you have a constitutional unfunded mandate or whether it's still an unfunded mandate, it's still an unfunded mandate in my eyes. And if they're going to request us to spend money, they either need to provide the resources with that request, or tell us which service they'd like us to stop providing, like assessment, taxation, or elections, or a, a county jail that are all mandated services also. So that's the real issue here is, is the tendency for them to, death by a thousand cuts. They may not be hitting that constitutional thing, but every time they do this, and I can't tell you how many bills I've reviewed that have some small portion of an unfunded mandate in them, that goes on and on and on and on, and it's, it's like, when, when, when does it stop? And, and just making that point every time they have something in a bill to the, to the legislature, that they're not passing a revenue stream with that mandate is important to me.
Chairman Bozovich and Commissioner Sorenson, I just did look at Senate Bill 895, and it doesn't define what a children's facility is, so I'm not exactly sure. It's probably in the, in the surrounding statute, but I don't, I can get back to you on that if you'd like.
Any other questions or comments about the, the list of, of positions on the various Seeing and hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the, the list?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the list of positions on the bills as noted in the table. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Sorenson in opposition. Mr. Kyler.
Could I just do one quick update?
Sure.
Commissioner Bozovich, so you had a conversation a little earlier with the assessor about the CAFSA funding, and I just wanted to remind the Board, we, when we do develop our legislative priorities, we did that twice, I think, in, in August, and then again in, I think it was October or December. But at any rate, we do have CAFSA, the re, the replacement of the $5 million that the legislature swept out of the CAFSA fund back in 2009, when we were going, when Oregon was going into recession. So in the old days, it was typical for the legislature to add $5 million general fund to CAFSA, and that helped, that at least was a way of helping keep that percentage. It wouldn't bring it back up to the clear, I think you had said 30 to 35% target, but at least it was something. We, we have that as a priority. That will be sort of more of an end-of-session kind of conversation. Again, Department of Revenue is not into its Phase Two conversations with the general government Subcommittee of Ways and Means, but it's, did serve as a reminder to me that that's an issue that we have long had as a priority, and we can continue to voice that concern to the legislature.
Thank you. And thank you for your time, and I understand you probably have to rush back up to Salem. I also understand that Commissioner Farr may be rushing up to Salem to testify this afternoon, seeing it's the last day to hear bills, so, and I believe there's a veteran abilities been trying to shepherd through. So we may, we may not see Commissioner Farr this afternoon. Thank you, Alex. So, yeah. Moving on to Commissioners' business, if we can get through this fairly quickly, we'll have time to do executive session before lunch, which is, we need about 20 minutes for. So announcements from Commissioners? Commissioner Liken.
Very quickly, Mr. Chair, so the Joint Ways and Means Road Tour, they do have a location. That'll be at the Springfield Library Meeting Room, Springfield City Hall, and that's Thursday, the 23rd. It looks like the time is 6:00 to 8:30. And so, it's my understanding you'll have two minutes if you want to present before the, the, the committee itself, and so that's, that's that. And then I'll, I talked to Commissioner Bozovich prior, and it may not be an agenda team request, it may be just a question, and then we can kind of go from there, but I'll wait for other announcements.
Any other announcements before we get to agenda team requests? And I'll come back to you, Mr. Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So here recently, and I believe it's been a little bit more in the media here lately, and I don't, I'm not sure if we really need a work session on this, but I, what I really would like is maybe get some information from the, maybe from the DA, District Attorney, and also from Mr. Clark, who handles our land use. And this really regarding, the example is the latest Columbia Care Facility that has gone into Springfield, the Springfield neighborhood off Clearview, and this is a halfway house that houses folks that have been found guilty of, of a crime and then a. then have been acquitted into this, where, based on, I think on the insanity tweet, so mental illness issues. And really, the question I have more than anything else, and I don't, I don't necessarily am asking for a work session, but maybe an information from those here, staff that could supply, because, because questions do get, do come up. First of all, they don't have to go through a public hearing. They don't have to go through a public process like what we did with Hexa and the, with sponsors here just recently. And it looks like to me that based on federal regulations, they do not have to buy by the CCNRs of the development that is in place that any other private citizen has to buy by if they want to live there. And so, so I'm just interested, because when questions arise, I think it's important that we're at least armed with answers. And I'll be honest with you, I was not armed with certain answers. I did know that on the public process piece, I knew it was pretty cumbersome, but I guess how legally, how, where this falls under, it's my understanding that there may be part of this with the American Disabilities Act, it may fall under this, but I, it just, just, I think to clarify some, some answers, so if something like this were to come up again, it would be good to be armed with, even though this happened in the city and not necessarily county, but I, but still I've received my fair share, fair share of questions myself. So not asking for a work session, but maybe just information that would come from staff just so we could have answers if something like this were to occur again. Thank you.
So basically, you're asking for three commissioners to give permission to use more than 15 minutes of staff--
That's correct.
--time to get a report back.
Yes.
I imagine it can be a written report back to the entire board and maybe a brief presentation from during County Council at a future board meeting. Is there three commissioners that will support that staff time? I'm seeing Commissioner Sorensen, Commissioner Farr, and Commissioner Lichen, so we have three. So we, we'll add that to the agenda team. Any other agenda team requests? I have one agenda team request. Link Smith with the West Lane Fire Protection Association, I don't know if I always get those initials correct, and ODF wants to have a work session with the board in the future to, one, review last year's fire season and particularly the Yellow Point Fire and how that worked out, particularly the cooperation between the county and, and the association in fighting that fire. And then also, he wants to give a preview of the upcoming fire season as they're predicting it right now. And in addition, they're looking at their association boundaries. They don't classify various land units relative to their assessment for the Fire Protection Association, where many of the southern and eastern Oregon associations do. And they want to go through a classification process and set up a classification committee, which may involve assessment taxation and all that. He'd like to present the issue of that to us and talk about how it would be, need to be done in joint with Wayne County to set up that system to have classifications for the assessments of various private property owners inside the boundaries of the association. So it'd be a kind of a three-part work session with them. If I can get a couple head nods, we'll, the agenda team will arrange to have that. So I see Commissioner Lichen, Commissioner Farr, and myself at least, so we have three there. So we'll add that to the future agenda team requests. So any other agenda team requests this morning? If not, then I will read us into executive session if I can get to the chair language here, and we'll recess into executive session, and then we'll go to lunch from there, and then we will come back into regular session at 1:30 this afternoon. And the Board of Commissioners will meet in executive session to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of the public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 1926602H, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purposes listed above. And we will be coming back out in a public session after lunch at 1:30 here in Harris Hall, but we are going to recess to the Board of Commissioners Conference Room as soon as we can get reorganized. We are recessed.